We'll go ahead and call our special meeting to order. We're here today to discuss the BDC and the ACEDC. I guess we'll start off with the BDC. Who's going to lead us out on that, Mr. Carter? John? Or who's the...
Chairman, I just know of the request to have the individuals here today. I am not the one to lead this discussion.
Ladies and gentlemen, the ACEDC is known for the historical...
Okay, so we'll start with ACEDC.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I...just a point of order. At the end of our last work session, this is my note page, and I wrote down our next workshop, agenda items, the streetscape and Alliance Pavilion. When did that change?
I don't remember that having that.
I don't either.
The BDC and the ACEDC was what I had on my notes.
Do we...I mean, have we received anything confirming that, or an agenda, or anything for today's meeting?
It's these...what I just announced is what's on today's agenda for the meetings. That's what was sent out in the email, I believe.
Okay.
I don't know where you got that information from. I read your email. I don't know where that come from. I mean, I don't have any knowledge of that.
It come from this room, sitting here at our last workshop.
I don't know. I didn't get to that.
I just went over my notes for the work session. I'm not showing an entry for that.
Chairman, may I add one comment?
Yes, sir.
And Brian, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that in conversation with Chairman, that the ACEDC had requested to come to a work session months ago. And I can't recall, but I think it was sometime November, December, if I'm correct. And then we got into some other issues to bring up, and this one was kind of on the back burner, so here we are, is how I recall it.
That's the way I recall it, Michael.
We'll certainly put what you've got on the next workshop.
That was not my topic. That was just what was mentioned, I think actually Commissioner Bobby Irwin had brought those topics up.
I don't know, but we're here on these, and we can bring them up at a later time either way. So, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I appreciate the opportunity, share some historical information about the Allegheny Economic Development Corporation, ACEDC, hopefully provide some meaningful information that will be important to you as you make decisions about the future of this 501(c)(3) organization and other similar organizations. So, I want to start, if I can, doing a little history about why this organization even exists. And it goes back to 1991, when Bristol Compressor was being recruited and the effort was going on to bring Bristol to Allegheny County. And at that time, there was no ACEDC. We were a member of the Regent D. Development Corporation, and I served on that board in Boone at that point in time. And Dan McPellin was our county manager at that time, and Patrick Woody was Chamber of Commerce. And when we were going through all of the hoops and the hurdles in terms of the recruitment and the incentives and the negotiations that were going on, when there was an item that had to be considered by the Development Corporation, we had to call a meeting and go to Boone. And that involved Yancey, Avery, Mitchell counties that didn't have a great lot of interest in having to come to a meeting in Boone to discuss some matter that was going on in Allegheny County. They did, they supported us, and they were there. Many times, those decisions, time was of the essence to get some action taken or have some item reviewed. So, that was the history of it in 1991. In 1997, when the Magnolia Project was underway, one of the early suggestions that Patrick Woody and Don Adams at the time had is that Allegheny needed to have their own development corporation so that we could handle Allegheny County business here in Sparta. And if you...the articles in incorporation were filed on January the 13th of 1998. The public hearing that we're going to talk about in just a moment, you'll see, was January the 26th. So, things were moving pretty fast to get this corporation in place to be able to...because the discussions with Magnolia were already well underway at that point in time. So, I think one of the important points, and you'll see as we go through this presentation, is the partnership and the collaboration that existed when Magnolia, when these discussions and negotiations were going on with Magnolia. What you're going to see here is the PowerPoint from the presentation that was presented on that evening. And I've got here, thanks to Drews for helping me out with these minutes, but this is the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners convened their regular meeting on Monday, January 26, 1998, in the Allegheny County courtroom. The town of Sparta also held meeting at this time due to the public hearing regarding Magnolia Project. Present were Chairman Walter Jones, Commissioners Ken Richardson, Eldon Edwards, Bob Green, Wiley McNeil, Attorney Bynum Marshall, County Manager Don Adams, President from Town of Sparta, Mayor John Miller, Councilman Bill Blevins, Randy Williams, George McIrwin, C.J. Hendricks, and Agnes Jones. Approximately 110 citizens attended the public hearing. So, if we...we'll...Drew, go to the next slide. And there's just the notice of the public hearing. There, the ACE...this was held in accordance with the General Statute 158. Town and county undertake economic development activities and consideration about the incentives and so forth and so on. So, going to the next one. The Economic Development Corporation chartered, there you see, January 1998, just two weeks prior to this meeting. And further, I'm having a little trouble reading. I've only got one eye today. But nine directors, you can see those, Tom Douglas, George Sheets, Martha McKnight, Dennis Gamble, George White, Don Adams, Bob Black, Brian Edwards, Andy Huber, participated in the incentive agreement and the loans. Next slide. The partnership existed of the corporation, Allegheny County, Town of Sparta, Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce, North Carolina Department of Commerce, Blue Ridge Electric Membership, Skyline Telephone Corporation, First Union National Bank, and the North Carolina Rules Center, along with Appalachian Regional Commission. The point there, I think, is you can see there were a number of people that were important to this process. All of those folks had an important hand in bringing whatever their attributes were and the assets to this meeting, to this discussion. The next item shows the Magnolia manufacturing, just details there about their...about the company.
Chairman, may I mention, Brian, if it's easier, it's also right there.
Okay, no, I'm...actually, it may be, yeah. Thank you.
I didn't know if the glare off my head was going to be proud. Just wanted to point that out to you.
Okay, thank you. This is just information, they had a sister company, they still have a sister company over in Hills of Virginia. This just provided information. There's the picture of the facility. There's the site, showing some of the product and the equipment. Go ahead. Okay, here were the deals, here was the details of the project. 224,000 square foot plant, a $40 million direct investment, $13 million building, 27 equipment, 85 to 100 full-time equivalent employees of their average wage, has strong potential for an expansion. Infrastructure investment, the Department of Transportation doing some roadwork, water and sewer grants totaling $650,000, 300 of that through the North Carolina Industrial Commission, 200 Appalachian Regional Commission grant, $150,000 Rules Center, electrical facilities, $750,000. That was a $600,000 grant through the North Carolina Department of Commerce Utility Fund, and $150,000 from Blue Ridge Electric. Town-county investment, it was $1.67 million. Site acquisition of 40-plus acres, the financing fees, the site prep, county's incentive was up to $850,000. Site acquisition, there you can see, 844,000 purchased the property, Richardson's pools, there's the financing, those were the terms, a letter of credit from First Union. Site prep, company responsible for the site prep contracts, site improvement, ACEDC obtains pledges from the county and the town, and loans from Blue Ridge Electric and Skyline Telephone. ACEDC reimbursed costs up to the $850,000 for the site prep. County investment and return on investment, site prep was a million two to be returned between 1998 and 2007, and it was ad valorem property taxes estimated between that period of time to recoup 1.3 million. Contractually binding agreement guarantees the county return of investment of the 1.289 million, establishes benchmark minimums and penalties. County investment was 425,000. The return on investment was franchise fee based on electrical purchases, and contractually binding agreement guarantees that the town's 425,000 would be returned in that period of time, excuse me, 1998 to 2008. Source of funds, Allegheny County upfront was 250,000, Sparta upfront, 250,000, Blue Ridge Electric, and NCEMC loan of 500,000. RIMCO Rural Utilities Service loan of 30,000, Skyline Telephone, 125,000, county-town principal and interest, 559,000, total of 1.7 million. The benefits there, additional revenue sales, sales tax, diversification of manufacturing, higher average wage than current, and potential for future expansion. That was the presentation that was given, January 26, 1998. Further, all the things were approved pretty much as outlined in that presentation. And what I would just say about it is that the purpose of the ACEDC is a tool in the toolbox for Allegheny County. It's not some organization that's out here doing anything other than...in fact, the county manager drives the organization. In the Articles of Incorporation, the address for the incorporation, principal office is 348 South Main Street, right here. It's not some post office box or some other location. The county manager called the meetings, county manager conducted the meetings, the county manager laid out the details of what was going on, what needed to be done. We had a Board of Directors that consists of Tom Douglas, who at the time was the town manager, George Sheets, had Allegheny Cable Vision and Downtown Businessman, Martha McKnight, served on the board at Blue Ridge Electric, Dennis Gamble, at the time, was at Blue Ridge Bank, George White was at First Union Bank, Don Adams, county manager, Bob Black, retired Lowe's executive and businessman, Andy Huber, retired banker and recent relocated Allegheny County at that time, and myself, and I was working at Napco at the time. So, those were the directors that were served on this board. We met as needed, and the county manager called those meetings and again gave us whatever direction that needed to be done. The reason this organization has not met on any regular basis, we only meet when there was a need to meet. Now, I know that's contradictory to what the bylaws say, but we don't meet just for the sake of having a meeting. If there was a need for a meeting, and Allegheny County had a project going on, and they needed that organization to serve a purpose, that's what we would be. And I would liken it to having a toolbox, a tool in your toolbox. And you may have an old tool there that's pretty specialized, only serves a purpose if you need it. If you don't need it, it's just taking up space. So, question is, do you toss it, or do you keep it? My answer to that would be, if it's not causing you any pain, it's not costing you anything, you might need it, why would you throw it away? The other question is, if it's sitting in the way, you got to move it every time you want to do something, you don't need it, yep, you probably want to get rid of it. So, that's kind of the analogy I would put to the ACEDC. It's an organization that exists to serve the county. It's not costing the county anything, taking up any space, but that would be for your consideration and your decision. If there was a project that required and could benefit, a project that the county was working on, it would be fairly simple to reactivate and get the board members reappointed and be ready to go. If you discontinue it, then charter's gone, Articles of Incorporation are gone, and so basically you'd be starting from scratch and trying to put something together, probably in short order. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions at this one.
Bobby. Brian, you went through the list of the Board of Directors, and some of them have passed away since then. Have any of those been replaced with anybody?
They have...actually, they have, yeah. The current board, that was the previous board. Current board members, of course, Don Adams gone, he was still on that board. Mitch Franklin has been appointed to serve on that board, and he replaced, I guess, Tom Douglas. Dennis Franklin is still on the board, Jim Halsey. Martha has resigned, her name is still on the board, but she has resigned from the board. John Miller, Tri-State Components. Kay Royal with New River Insurance is a new member. George White is still on the board, so that's who's currently on there.
You still have enough active board members. If you had to have a meeting, you could call one.
Yes, we could, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a number of questions.
Okay.
You mentioned that the address for the corporation is here in this building. What is the address of this building, please?
348 South Main Street.
It's odd. Approved this 13th day of January 1998 by the Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation, amended on August the 5th, 2020 by the Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation, the bylaws. And it states, "The principal office of the corporation in the state of North Carolina shall be located at 115 Atwood Street, Sparta, North Carolina, 28675."
Mr. Urban, let me just...yeah, that's what it is now. I was giving you the history of what the address was when it was created.
You were alluded, alluding that it was currently that way.
No, I didn't allude anything. I just stated what the historical... I didn't allude anything, I just stated what the historical.
Very, very well. You know, first, before I begin my questioning, I want to thank you for coming because since we're broadcasting this, I want everyone to be particularly fair, that this is a 501(c)(3) corporation. They are a legal entity, am I not correct?
Absolutely, yes.
They are a legal entity. They act independently. They can purchase property. And as you will see as I go through some of my questions, there's some things out there that I have some questions on, but they don't have to answer. They don't have to be here. They can turn around and they can walk away from here at this time. Not only that, but please correct me, Madam Legal Advisor, as a corporation, only the board of directors can do away with a corporation, am I not correct?
That would be the case because the county only has a member on the board.
We had a member, we removed that member. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up, whenever I look at your two thousand and eighteen, which is the latest Form 990, and for the education of the public, a Form 990 is basically a tax return for a 501(c)(3). On that Form 990 in the year two thousand and eighteen, it was showing an asset of one point five four seven six ninety-eight dollars, a million five. Now, I have a letter from Mr. Cavendish stating that this was a mistake. For twenty-one years, they had claimed as an asset, the Magnolia Building. Now, whenever you go on as a board member, you have a fiduciary and a performance liability in my mind. You need to know what's going on in that board. Mr. Cavendish and Mr. Edwards are both members of that board, yet for twenty-one years, we reported an asset that in October, and I have the deed, in October of two thousand, excuse me, nineteen ninety-eight, the Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation and the Magnolia Manufacturing Company transferred some property. The Development Corporation transferred the deed because Magnolia had met all the stipulations that were tied to this development. Now granted, the Economic Development Committee, A E D C, has been enacted for a few years, but they still have business going on. Now, the reason why I say that they have business going on, and please explain this to me, you have in the bank at this time over seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and twelve cents with an outstanding loan of twelve thousand dollars. Now, that loan that is outstanding, as I understand it, was for the sewage and water going to the Allegheny County Group Homes. Is that correct?
I'd be happy to address that if you want, if you want to, okay.
I would.
This is a letter dated September the twenty-seventh, two thousand and one, Allegheny County Economic Development Commission and Allegheny Group Homes, Inc., Sewer Project. Project summary, Allegheny Group Homes acquired property on Highway eighteen south for the purpose of construction of a facility to accommodate a sheltered workshop environment for developmentally disabled adults in Allegheny County. The facility also serves its administrative offices for Allegheny Group Homes, Inc. and New River Cottage, Inc. Allegheny Group Homes, Inc. requested the town of Sparta to extend water and sewer to the property. The town expressed their support for the project, but did not have funds available to fund the project. It was agreed between the town and Allegheny Group Homes that if the funding for the project could be secured, the town would administer the project, excuse me, and make the connection to the town system. With the assistance of Region D Council of Governments, the Allegheny Chamber of Commerce, we were able to secure financing for the project through Appalachian Regional Commission and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. The A C E D C received a loan from USDA in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars, which it agreed to loan to Allegheny Group Homes, Inc. The term of the loan was twenty-five years at point five, one-half percent interest. A provision of the loan agreement allows A C E D C to use the repaid funds as a revolving loan fund for future economic development projects. Based upon the approval of the loan from USDA, the town was able to secure a matching grant from Appalachian Regional Commission in the amount of sixty-eight thousand eighty-five dollars. We now had a total funding package available of a hundred and thirty-six thousand eighty-five dollars to complete the sewer line project only. There was not sufficient funding available to connect water to the site, so only the sewer connection was completed. So there is a loan agreement between A C E D C and the group home to repay the sixty-eight thousand dollars, which allowance to what, I think, John, you said about seventy-two in the bank now?
Right.
And that money is there and can be used for additional revolving loan type projects.
Very good. Now, it's my understanding, the letter that I got from Mr. Cavendish, that outstanding loan is twelve thousand at this time. Is Appalachian Health and Daymark on that sewage system?
They are.
Why are they, are they paying into that loan?
They are not.
They are not paying any money?
No.
So we have a organization that you sit on the board that is providing a service to the mentally challenged in this county. They're out raising money, yet we are charging them, yet we have two county entities that are hooked to the same project and the county is not contributing anything. So that, that kind of gets me, especially as the parent of a special needs child, I know how close that these organizations work.
John, let me just, I'm just, may I make one comment about that? At the time that the water line, sewer line was run, the health department was not there at that time. That was built several years later. And, and they, and the Daymark facility, which at the time was New River Mental Health, they had their own well and they had their own septic. So they were not required to tap onto that. Later, they did, and I think to John's point, would it be fair for the county to be paying? Absolutely. Should they? I believe they should. Just one of those things twenty years ago and over, you know, who, who would have come back at the time? But absolutely, the county ought to be paying their fair share.
Right. Right now, according to your twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, you have total liabilities of a hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That figure has not changed between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. And this is secured by mortgages and notes payable to unrelated third parties according to the Form 990. Your outstanding debt, is that, is, what is it?
I don't know. I'm not familiar with it. Yeah.
And what brought that to my attention, it hasn't changed in the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, or two thousand eighteen Form 990s.
I, I'm not aware that there's any debt to the A C E D C.
My concern, my primary concern is that we have an organization that, and it's rightly pointed out to me, it's not a requirement that you have, it doesn't affect your 501(c)(3) status if you don't have an annual meeting. But you haven't had an annual meeting and according to the terms of office in the letter that I received from Mr. Cavendish, Mitchell, Mitch Franklin, Dennis Gamble, John Miller and Kay Royal, all their terms expired in January, January of two thousand and twenty-one. Did you hold your annual meeting and elect new members at that time?
We did not.
Now, that's according to your bylaws. Now, also, I'm going to read the purpose of your bylaws. The purpose for which the corporation is organized is to further the economic development of Allegheny County and promote job creation opportunities in the area. The corporation will seek to enhance overall residential business, commercial environment, thus improving the quality of life for the people of Allegheny County as well as reducing the burden of government by helping to provide quality jobs in a growing tax base, which you did. You did do that with Magnolia. But whenever we had the grant request from grants, we didn't even know you guys existed. You're a source.
We, we would have, we would have been happy to have been a party to that if, if we had been approached about it at the time. Neither the county, I don't think the town, I was town manager, I never heard anything from the county about that, and so that was all negotiations that were going on here at this office. But to your point, absolutely, John, that would have been an avenue and that would have been a type of purpose that the A C E D C could have and certainly would have stepped in and provided that assistance.
If you'd.
Only for loans, yeah, right. It had to be, it would have to be on a, on a revolving loan, but.
But you had no meetings. The county manager was on that board at that time, but you had no meetings for the new county manager to realize that you were, you existed. I only thought you might.
I think, I think Michael James was the county manager when all that happened.
Yeah, but you had no meetings.
Yeah.
You had no meetings after Don Adams left, it looks like, according to the letter that I've got from two thousand and sixteen.
It's pretty much, yeah, I think so.
Now, if you guys want to dissolve, what are you going to do with the money? Are you going to stay? That's, that's up to your board of directors, it's not up to us.
Well, I, I think we have no intent or interest to dissolve. What I would say is, number one, that Articles of Incorporation was basically a template. Ernie Pearson, the attorney at the time, and in fact, there's even references in there to Wake County. He, he obviously took an existing Articles, cut and pasted and got something to Allegheny County in short order, because you can see from the filing dates and the dates of the public hearing, that there was not a lot of thought given to creating this organization. It was to get something in place to serve the, the needs of the county at that time. So what the purpose and the mission of that, we clearly did not do that, never was part. We were here to serve the county, to help when we needed, when the county needed help. If that organization could help, we were willing and able to do that. If the county doesn't need that, then again, it's a tool in the tool shed, it can be left there or it can be used at your discretion.
It is there and you have, I don't know how you built up the money and I don't know what obligation that you've got.
That's the repayment, that's the repayment, that's the repayment of the money coming back from the group homes.
Group home?
Yeah.
You know, you owe twelve thousand and you got seventy-two in the bank. If you could pay it off and take part of that burden off of the group home, why not do?
The burden is on the group home, John, it's not on the A C E D C. There is a loan document where the group home signed for the loan. And so if, if your legal counsel, I'd say that's a legal question for the group home and/or the county. We would have no authority to extinguish that loan.
They're paying the loan to, the loan payment is coming to you, is it not?
That's correct. And the requirements of that money is that it had to be repaid and put back into the fund so it could be used for subsequent revolving loan activities to support.
Okay, so now, now it comes to light that these documents will not show, and the reason why you're here, basically you all paid the loan and they're, they're paying you back and that's where the funds are getting billed up?
Yeah. Received a grant.
You received the grant, so they're paying it back. Now you've got seventy-two thousand that we need to note, that you, that can be used for a firm that's wanting to come in to establish a business, only be a loan.
That's right, yeah.
Well, nothing else. Thank you for your history because it now gives us another place that we can go if we have a institution or a company that's wanting to come in and, and clear in the air. But I would encourage you to find out what, what you're reporting on the liabilities for that.
I, I agree and thank you. I, I'll be honest with you, I've never seen the 990 for the A C E D C, but.
Somebody's got to sign it.
Yeah.
And the reason why I bring this up, a long time ago, fifty-two years ago, in my business law class, I had a professor that stated that you could go after corporations by piercing the corporate veil. One way of piercing the corporate veil is asking for the minutes of the annual meeting. And if they did not have the annual meeting and no minutes are available, you have pierced the corporate veil, have you not?
There would be multiple ways to pierce the corporate veil. Not following your, your corporate charter or your bylaws would be one of those, but it would be an outside person who would come in to try to do that.
Right.
And, and it would be that the, the board of directors have a fiduciary duty to comply with what was in those bylaws.
So the board of directors would be at financial jeopardy if they failed to follow the guidelines. So, Mr. Chairman, my answers, I have the answers to the questions that I have, they're very logical, laid out there. Unfortunately, the documents that are out, you've got to read between the lines and you've got to get questions. And I frankly, I wanted this out in the public so that the public can see what's going on instead of the he said, she, she said, if we do it behind closed doors. So I'm not alleging any impropriety or anything like that. There are things that you need to do, five-minute annual meeting, it fills, it checks the line and covers the liability that you could be placing yourself in. I thank you for the dedication that you've shown by sitting on this board and going through, and particularly Magnolia, or now known as Parkdale, has been an asset to this county. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome, glad to be in.
Some of the questions I have for the A C E D C, sir.
I would, I would just say that the questions are very appropriate. I'm glad to be able to shed some light on it and nothing wrong at all in terms of, and it needed clarification and you brought up a couple of points that we certainly need to be addressing, so thank you very much.
Appreciate the history there and hopefully we can, we can use this A C E D C again, maybe sometime some other factory comes in, somewhere down the road, you know. Anybody have any questions?
Just, just a comment or two. So, so we have a tool that's sitting there with a little bit of seed money that maybe could be leveraged towards a grant if anybody wants to come in, but it's, anybody that would apply for it, it would be some type of a loan or repayment process.
That's correct.
There's no one way for the, for the monies to go just to them for, be granted to them without any kind of repayment, so that then the corporation can maintain that seed money for future potential projects.
That's right.
Okay, and that's any, I mean, is there any limitations on what type of projects or?
You know, Mark, the, the only, and again, this goes back twenty, twenty years, and I, I think we just have to have a little refresher course on what we could do and we'd probably need some legal counsel because, again, the, the county manager, the county office was always the driver. If we needed guidance on what we were doing, we were, we, as board members, we were looking to the county manager to give us that guidance and, and the county's legal counsel. So we weren't not out here, you know, looking around for projects. We, we were there to serve the county if a project came to the county manager.
So and then in its existence, essentially Magnolia and then the, the.
Group Home.
Group Home project, which has had a huge amount of impact.
Yes.
I mean, if you look at everything in totality. So, I mean, if, if it does nothing more than those two, it's, it's, that's pretty huge, I think. So, thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
That was my question, was, was there any limit? Did it have to be, I know you helped the group home, but is, I, I guess its main purpose was to serve like business, to drive.
Yeah, it would primarily be geared toward businesses and certainly from the Development Corporation's board. We would be working in concert and hand in hand with what the county was wanting to see. We would not be off on some tangent. We, we would be working, we're here as partners to Allegheny County to facilitate. I mean, the people who are serving this board, these are folks who have community interest here, they're active in our community, they share our, you know, desire for positive change. And these are the people you would want standing with you in your corner if you were working on, on a project. So, no, there's no other motivation for the folks on this board than, other than to serve the best interest of Allegheny County.
Basically, you, you've got roughly seventy-some thousand in seed money.
Yes.
If somebody needs a revolving loan that you can give, which you've done in the past, and all of that, the best I can tell, everything is.
past, and all of that, the best I can tell, everything has been to the benefit of the county. Day mark, I think you said possibly the health department's hooked on to the, to that system.
Yes.
You look at what the health department's going through today.
Yeah.
If we didn't have the health department, if we didn't have them located where they are, we'd be in dire needs. I can see, I think, some good questions, some good conversation. I, I like the history that was behind this. That was 20-some years ago. I can see there's been nothing done illegally. There's no money been hidden anyplace. All this information is on the, the money wise is on a 990 form.
Maybe some things need to be corrected on the 990, but, yeah.
But, you know, I think most of these 990s run two or three years behind. So I don't know what the current one shows. I don't know when you have to file the next one.
Every year, they have to be filed annually, but.
But everything gets fine tuned at some point, and maybe you need to go back and look at some minor detail.
Right. Well, the interest rate on that loan was 0.5%, and even back then, 20 years ago, the rate would have been, the rate would have been something substantially more than that. So it was beneficial to the group home and to the town and county to be able to offer that and to get that sewer line run over there, so.
You guys got any questions, Brian or Michael? Brian, certainly appreciate you coming today and giving us the history, and it's been very informative, and we appreciate it, and.
Glad to do it. Glad to be here.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brian.
Bill Cavetti, BDC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have got a ream of paper here, and I am mindful of your time. So, so first, I'd like to just thank you for the opportunity to come and share what the BDC is doing, what we're currently doing, what we've done in the past, what we hope to do in the future. So I've got a couple of documents I'd like to pass out, and if it's so kept, I'll just pass those out a couple at a time, so they're not too awful distracting. The, the BDC, as we, we had our discussion at the last work session, there was some discussion about the 911 dispatch system up there. We are currently at full capacity. We have all of our offices full. We do have one office, it's actually two offices with an interior door that joins, adjoining, that allows those offices to be adjoining, and accessible interior that will come open the end of March. But as, as Brian is passing those things around, what you have there is a list of, of our current clients in the building. And I'm not going to go through all of those, but if you, if you flip down, flip back to about fourth or fifth page, there's a summary. And there, at the Blue Ridge Business Development Center in our facility, we currently house five government-related organizations. These are like the DMV, the Child Services Association with DHHS, the Earthquake, the Office of Budget Management, which is doing the earthquake distribution there. There. We have six nonprofit organizations and eight private businesses. And from those, there are a total of 34 full-time positions. Now, many of these positions are, are not in that building 40 hours a week, but it's people like Pam Andrews, who also has an office in Elkin. So she sees clients in Elkin and also clients there at the BDC. But there's 34 full-time employees, there's six part-time employees, and then 12 volunteers or interns of organizations in the BDC. So an example of internships with Allegheny Community TV, Charlie has interns that come over from the high school. They do a lot of the work there as far as production, putting things up on the website. Kate Irwin, she also has interns that work with her in graphics design and learn their way through that. So that's kind of, that's who we have in the building currently. In the, the document there, it's a, this spreadsheet that has, has numbers and dates on it. We track how many people use our facilities, use the conference room and the atrium. We started tracking that in 2016. And so 2020 is kind of a wash force, because we were closed part of the time and there weren't many people coming out. But in, in 2019, we had 3,445 people that used that conference room or atrium. And those 30, roughly 3,500 people attended just over 300 meetings that were held there. And one of the, the benefits for the public for that conference room usage is that we are open after hours, after normal business hours. So a lot of the meetings take place after 5:00, where most other public facilities are closed. And these range anywhere from, from a prayer or a Bible study group that meets on Tuesday mornings, to the beekeepers that meet once a month, to the BDC board meetings. So there's a wide range of usage for that facility. There's no charge for use of that. We have, we have discussed that in the past of whether we should have a fee for usage. And our thought is, the county does allocate or appropriate some funding for that, so it's a service to the county citizens as a whole, so there's no fee for usage of that. Any questions about the folks in the buildings?
How many pay no rent?
The Department of Motor Vehicles, the Driver's License Examiner, they pay no rent. The Historical Society, they have an office in the back. They pay no rent. That's, that's all of them. Everyone else pays rent.
How many people have been in the BDC for over two years?
I could sort of run down. I can't give you just a hard number. If we want to kind of run through the folks, I can give you a rough idea that way. Imaging Specialist would be one. Allegheny Community TV would be one. Pam Andrews, her office would be one. There's a couple of others that are right near that two-year mark, but those are the primary ones that have been there.
Actually, they've been over quite, quite a bit longer than two years. I'm aware of a couple of them. Now, Imaging Specialist would be coming up on two years. Allegheny TV is, that says it all, because it's Allegheny TV, it's serving the county. So they are, I understand that they are paying or not paying rent.
They do pay rent. They have three office spaces, plus the, the studio, and then the dressing room beside the studio, and they pay $200 a month for that space.
I'm aware that the Department of Motor Vehicles has been closed since before COVID. I know in April I went over to renew my license. They were closed at that time. So they've been closed for more than a year, yet they're paying nothing?
Correct. Well, they've never, they've never, they've never paid anything.
They've never paid anything. We're collecting a dollar a year, collecting probably a dollar a year from a library. We invested around $180,000 in the, in that building last year. But here again, you are a corporation. We have signed the operation over, of the BD, the Blue Ridge Development Center to you by a operational management agreement. One of the things that is in that operation management agreement is support and promote economic development and business activity within Allegheny County, North Carolina, which I will, you've proven that with the use of your conference room, but operator manager being responsible for economic development activities and serving as Director of Allegheny County Economic Development Corporation, located in Allegheny County, North Carolina. The corporation didn't meet for approximately four years. So, and we're paying you $10,000 a year. I realize this was formed as an incubation for small businesses in this county, but whenever we have, there's two businesses that I am aware of, that's been over there for more than five years, possibly six. Or is that a safety net that we're providing or a hammock?
Our, well, it's, it's a good question. It's a good question to consider. Our average rent per square foot is, is right around $1 per month, per square foot. That's the average rent. Commercial rental property here in Sparta averages somewhere between 60 and 70 cents a square foot. So folks are actually paying more in our building than they are, than commercial space goes for.
I, according to Marcia Waggoner, that is not the case. Now, Marcia had a client or a prospective client, client that came in that was going to rent the room that we knew as the old pool room. But Marcia could not rent it and provide the electric, the heating, the air conditioning, the telephone, and whatever else that we provide over there. So she lost that client to the BD, to the Blue Ridge Development Center. So we're depriving merchants here, or the store owners here on Main Street, and Lord knows, there's plenty of space there. If you're competing with them, they cannot compete with that whenever you're providing everything. Now, my home telephone and, and cable runs me over $200 a month. I would be better off sleeping in a room in one of your offices, because you're providing all that. I mean, Jiminy Christmas, I'd probably be able to turn the thermostat up higher a little bit, too. You know, now granted, you run it the way you want to, because we turned it over to you. And the purpose that I, that I have requested this meeting is to void the contract, because to me, you're not meeting the economic development portion of it, and let the county take it over. But I do have a question. Where did you get money to purchase the two lots that the, the farmer's market is on?
Those properties, those were actually purchased by the BDC. There was a, an annual payment from those, which the county, the town reimbursed us for those payments. And so when that was set up, when that transaction was set up, Brian talked with the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. He told them what we had in mind. If the town had just straight out bought those properties, it could not have been used as a match for the grant that the town just received for the upgrades at Kraus Park. But by structuring it the way that it was structured, which was before I came there, structuring it the way that it was structured, it allowed the BDC then to transfer on paper that property over to the town, which could then be used as the, the match for the grant from the Parks and Recreation.
Let's get our timelines correct. The Blue Ridge Development Center paid cash, according to what I've got, for one lot, $30,000. For the other lot, $56,000. And I've got the transfer of the deeds. I've got the deeds here. Now, that was in October the 22nd of 2012, one lot. And this was purchased from the Federal National Mortgage Association, probably under a forfeiture. But that was October 22nd, 2012. The other lot was purchased for $30,000 from the Grayson National Bank. That may have been the foreclosure. That was September the 28th of 2012. So those properties were purchased. If you borrowed the money, it's not showing up on the 2000, on your Form 990s. Now, you did not transfer those lots until December the 3rd of 2020, according to the deed transfer. So, you know, there's eight years in between, but the question I have is, where did the money come from to buy the lots that you transferred to the Town of Sparta for nothing?
Let me answer that if I can.
Yes, sir.
The Town of Sparta paid for it, John. I mean, it was structured.
Explained. In my earlier meetings with Parks and Recreation Trust Fund about expanding the park, there were the two homes there. One of them was a single-family home and the other one was a rental. One of them was in foreclosure with, at the time, Grayson National Bank, now Skyline Bank. And the other one was Fannie Mae. Both, both properties were in pretty significant disrepair. And we had had a number of issues over the years at the park, because those had become rental houses and with dogs and other things that were not complementary to our park. So with the town council's blessing and the mayor's blessing, we decided we needed to acquire those properties, and we were able to do that. And Grayson National Bank financed that. We did it through the Business Development Center, because after my consultation with Parks and Recreation Trust Fund about expanding the park, they said, the best way for you to meet your match is if somebody, some corporation or individual gifts to the town. And if they gift that to you, you can use that as credit for your match. And that's what we did. And that amounted to $194,000 benefit to the Town of Sparta in the terms of park and recreation. Not only that, it benefited our farmer's market, because working collaboratively with the Allegheny County, and with Extension Service, and with Appalachian State University, we constructed a facility over there now that serves our community in a very high level, I think, for local, local foods and to support our, support our merchants. So I don't know if there's a criticism about it. I would just say that I think it was a strategic opportunity, and we took advantage of it to the benefit of all of the citizens of Allegheny County. The BDC did not, was not out one nickel for all of that transaction. Town of Sparta paid everything. The BDC, because of their status, had to pay taxes on that property, which the county, the town, rather, reimbursed the BDC for all expenses. And then it wound up being a significantly important benefit to Sparta and Allegheny County to have the farmer's market and that property that allowed us to expand the park.
So you just transferred the cost of the property to them?
Well.
You didn't loan it to them?
We did not loan it to them, no. We, we, the loan was with the BDC. The BDC had a loan with Grayson National Bank, and the town reimbursed the BDC for all mortgage or loan payments.
Okay. I can only go back to 2017.
Yeah.
I could have gone to 2016 to see that transaction. But I would encourage you, whenever you do something like this, that you make sure that you have something on file, because we can't, whenever we start looking at it, we can't see what's going on. The only thing that we can look at is that the Blue Ridge Development Center bought the property and then later transferred it. And it looks bad in the public eye.
Well, and of course, all of that transaction was with the Town of Sparta, and I think you will find that the Town of Sparta minutes will reflect the transactions and what, what occurred and what was approved.
And.
And also the Business Development Center minutes will reflect that their board approved and were, you know, it was all, it was all totally transparent.
And to reinforce, and to reinforce, the Blue Ridge Development Center Committee, Blue Ridge Development Committee, I believe is the proper term, is a 501(c)(3), a legal entity that can purchase and can sell property and operates the way that it wants to by the board of directors. It's the only thing that you answer to. So that was a question that I have, because it just did not look. Where did the money come from? And whenever you look at the transfer of deeds, it doesn't tell it unless there's a mortgage on the dang-gone thing. So that, I'm satisfied with that. Thank you for doing it. It helps the town, it helps everyone. But here again, whenever you start looking at it from the outside, it just doesn't make sense. And again, this is the reason why I wanted it brought out into the public, so that the public has aware, is aware of where everything came from, and there's no questions out there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, one thing, if I could maybe back up to Commissioner John Irwin's earlier question about economic development activities. So Brian is passing around a document, and this was a, there's several pages of questions that Commissioner Irwin sent me last December, January. And these are the answers to as many of those questions as I could. There's some that I can answer. But what I'll, I'll draw your attention to is beginning on the bottom of the second page. This is a, this is a rather lengthy list. So, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to, to go over these? Or, I mean, there's several pages of them. Or would you like y'all just hold on to them and look at it later?
What consensus? The board will go over them briefly?
Well, I also, there was an email that Mr. Cavetti sent me where he had a number of answers that I forwarded to all the members of the board at that time. of answers that I forwarded to all the members of the board at that time. The one thing that was not on there was economic activities, which I showed that he has given us a complete reckoning on that.
We'll, we'll read over them ourselves, just the times getting away from us.
One of the, one of the things that I would point out with that list is those, those are things outside of just kind of normal day-to-day operations with the BDC. So if we have legislative visits to Raleigh, that's kind of outside what we normally do. So that's listed on here. There is trainings that, that I have overseen, that I have given that are on here. So there's numerous things on there. One of the things that I just wanted to mention because I'm really proud of, of what we accomplished with that, we had a legislative visit in 2016 and we went and saw Representative Elmore and Senator Ballard. And it was just a get to know you meeting. We, we asked for nothing on that meeting. The next year, we went back and we actually asked for some money that year. And that was for funding for the Bluffs Restaurant. And we went down, it was me and Brian, Chris Jones and Tom Smith, I think, when Tom was still on the, the board. And we went down hoping to get $50,000 from the General Assembly for that. And we ended up with $300,000 from the General Assembly and $300,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission, which we didn't know that we even were eligible for until we did a visit with Olivia Collier there at Commerce, their A R C Director. So I'm especially proud of that. But the thing that that points, it points out to me is the, the benefit of those face-to-face interactions, the benefits to those networks that we create. And so someone has to do that. Now, whether that's me, or whether that's you guys, whether it's the county manager, whoever you would like that to be, but someone has to make those types of contacts.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
My concern will basically boil down to the rental we, that is being charged and the services being provided by the Blue Ridge Development Center at this time and the, and the charges. Now, I can't help but feel that we are hampering business activities in the town because we are, we have basically set up a hammock system for businesses at the Blue Ridge Development Center. Now, under the current operational management agreement that we have, we can't change it. The only way that we can do this is to cancel the contract. And it may be in dispute whether we can cancel the contract because of lack of blue, of business development. But that's going to be up to the county board. I would suggest that we cancel contracts effective July the 1st of 2021, renegotiate and make sure that we place in there a time limit where reduced rent can be charged. This county has, the citizens of the county has placed a good deal amount of money into Blue Ridge Development Center. And we're keeping it up. We're getting very little benefit out of it, in my opinion, but then again, it, it's up to the commissioners.
I would offer, just in response to that, as I said, we have 18 businesses that are in that, that building. There's 34 full-time jobs, there's six part-time jobs, there's close to 3,500 people that are county residents that are using those facilities for a, an expenditure of $10,000 allocation from the county. To me, I am not a numbers person, I'm not a money person, but to me, that seems like a pretty good return on the investment. Now, as far as, as far as the future of the BDC going forward, I am fully open, and our board is open, to discussions about what that future looks like. In 2019, we hosted and I co-facilitated a series of discussions and I think some of the, the board members sat in on those discussions about the future of economic development in Allegheny County and how that should be structured, what type of entity should we have to do that. And from those meetings in 2019, this new chamber organization was formed. And as we did that, we recognized that the BDC's role may change, that the things that are in that current service agreement may not be applicable to us going forward. However, I do think there's going to be some other things that will change that we'll, that there'll be some need to pick up. For instance, we have, we have some funding that we have, have built up. And so there's roughly $73,000 in, in this fund. And there's no stipulations on that, whether it's used as a revolving loan fund, it could be used as a, as the match for a grant, it could be used straight out for a grant, there's lots of calls for that. And we have been requested, if you look through that list, when the, the county was putting together a connector path between the high school and the community college, we put $5,000 towards that. When we wanted to push for the sales tax, sales tax in the fall, the BDC put $1,700 towards that effort. We paid all the expenses for that. So that is what that money does for us. It looks like a lot of money sitting there doing nothing, but it is actually a savings account that allows us to do things just like that.
Can I ask you one question, Dale?
Sir.
From what you just said, there's 34 full-time jobs, six part-time jobs. Now, your average rental at the BDC per square foot was about a dollar?
A dollar a square foot per month.
About a dollar.
So those, those offices are roughly dependent on office?
In town, it was 60?
60 to 70 cents.
How much?
60 to 70 cents. So we're 30 to 40 cents higher than the, the property in town. Now, the difference is, we can rent small spaces, we can rent 150 square feet, whereas in town, you know, a lot of the office space is 800, 900, sometimes 2,000 square feet and they want to rent that together.
So the people are paying really more to BDC per square foot?
Correct.
On the rental. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just.
Mr. Chair, but I also have to point out that in town, they do not provide heating, air conditioning, electric, nor do they provide telephone, nor do they provide cable. Now, it is, it is the things that are, the extras that are falling in there.
So probably the, the purest comparison to the BDC would be the Social Services Building. The Social Services Building is a little bit bigger as far as the space that's rented. They pay $4,100 per month. Their electric and water runs somewhere around 850 to 900,000 if it's really cold. And so if you do the math on that, again, that takes you down to about the 60 or 70 cent amount. So there's a building that's very comparable to the BDC that's paying more, I have to think about, they're paying less than what people pay at the BDC.
But you conveniently left out the telephone service. The telephone service, they're averaging over $1,500 dollars or is it minutes in long-distance charges?
Y'all provide telephone? We don't, we don't provide telephone. Okay.
You provide telephone?
No, we don't.
According to your contract, you do?
Our contract says we include all utilities except for a landline telephone.
Bear with me for one moment.
So it's water, sewer and electric?
Water, sewer, electricity, yeah. Which is very beneficial to a small business. They know what their expenses are every month and there's no ups and downs.
They got a flat income.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, John's looking over. We'll move along a little bit here.
I don't really have any questions, but I just, you know, the, that whole building houses the community college, the library and the BDC. And we, the county, for the most part, keeps it up. The investments we've made recently was roof and HVAC systems.
Correct.
And so, I mean, it's not just, all that investment's not just limited to the, to the middle, what I call the BDC portion of it. I mean, you've got the library and the, and the Wilkes Community College, the benefit from those for the county, too.
I think.
Which is, which is kind of, kind of what we, we really want to provide that service to the county, to have a library and a community college. And if we didn't provide it, we wouldn't have it. Same thing with the, with the driver's license office. That's, there is never, to my knowledge, since I've been on this board, in order to have that service, we had to provide them a space. That's what I've always heard.
I clarified that today. I can, I can speak to that.
Yeah. And if we did provide that space, they wouldn't be here.
They'd be gone.
Right. Now, that's a whole different conversation now with COVID because they hadn't been here and we have a space sitting there. So, I mean, that's a, that's a different conversation.
I did talk, I did talk with someone from DMV today and they said that that's not the case, that we have to furnish that space to them. She said, he said generally in smaller counties, there's some negotiation between the county and DMV about how they're going to work out the space requirements. But he said it's not a hard, fast requirement because I thought that was the case also.
That's what, when I came in, Don Adams was manager and that's what he had always indicated, that he was unsuccessful getting them here unless we provided the space.
He told me the same thing.
Yeah.
Why haven't they opened, why haven't they been open since at least February of last year?
I asked him that question, he said that they, he would like to come up here. He's, he works out of Wilkes-Barre office. He said he'd love to have some presence up here, but it's above him why that hasn't happened, a supervisory change.
They haven't occupied the space, so that space that you could have been collecting $300 on a month.
Correct.
Well, just got a question here.
About the, the driver, the DMV part, I remember when the county was ready to lose the tag office. The people in the community were really concerned about that, having to drive to Elk and or Ash or wherever. Now, I don't want to lose the, the DMV here. If it's, if it takes giving them a space or giving them a, maybe negotiate a low payment or something, that's a benefit to the people of the county. That's what the county government is supposed to do, is benefit the people of the county. And it, just like the tag office, I've heard from numerous people, that was one of the best things that the commissioners did was the tag office. I don't want to go backwards and not have a DMV up here for people to renew their license or for these youngsters to get their license. I think that's very important for the county.
Yes, sir. And the two groups that, from my, well, actually, there's three groups that I see utilized that's DMV the most. It's some of our more senior folks that really don't want to drive to Elk and Mounier or West Jefferson. And then the folks you mentioned, the kids that are getting their license or learner's permit for the first time, it's much more convenient for them to get out of school at 3 o'clock, come over just down the, the road and get their license. Then the other is people that have moved here from out of state to get their first North Carolina license. Most everyone else can renew their stuff online.
Whenever, whenever they were operating, they only operated two days a week.
Correct.
You are correct. Operators shall be responsible for payment of all utility bills included electricity, sewer and telephone, water. So you're, you're responsible for those bills, whether you collect it from your renters or not is up to the corporation, though. So you are correct.
In the essence of time, let's start winding up this conversation.
That ends my questions. That's all the questions that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Michelle.
Thank you, thank you for your responses.
I just wanted to say that from the type of businesses that you have in here, it doesn't seem like that they would take away from Main Street businesses because a lot of these people would either work out of their home or, you know, just do something in a larger conglomerate, conglomeration somewhere else. So I think it's kind of apples to oranges because there's a few in here that might be Main Street businesses, but for the most part, many of them wouldn't even be in existence and provide these jobs if.
Many of them, they, they have said they would work from home if they didn't have the space there. And what we work really hard to do is create a sense of community inside the building. So if once someone has a question about website development, we've got two folks in that building that can answer that question. If there's someone that has a real estate question, we've got folks in there that can answer that question. So having those people in there together, it's very, has a very collaborative environment.
We'll say, too, that I'm on the CTE through, through the schools board. And there's a lot of the kids who do internships with businesses that are in here. So it's a biz, it's a benefit to our local youth, too. So there's a good partnership between the school and these businesses.
Correct.
So that's all.
Chairman, if I could, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask if I could just throw out one sort of challenge to y'all as a board.
Sure.
To me, one of the things that is most needed from an economic development standpoint is we need a really clear vision from this board about what y'all want to see happen. I have a, I had an old preacher friend that used to say, if you aim for nothing, you'll hit it every time. And I feel like we spend a whole lot of time going down a path and we're not sure if that's the right, it seems right to me, but that doesn't mean that it's right for y'all. I, I hope you can see from the information, if you'll tell me what the benchmarks are, if you'll tell me what the metrics are, I'll work, I'll work myself to death trying to hit them. But if I don't know what they are, I don't know what y'all want, I, I'm not sure that I can hit that. So I, I need, we need, Brian at the chamber, we need a really clear vision of what successful economic development looks like from y'all.
Doug, as far as the BDC, I mean, kind of from where that money came from, that, I mean, that, we didn't really get a history there. It's come a long ways. It's some twists and turns and it's kind of ended up where it has. But up th, from its inception, it's always had, as I understand it, it's always had someone from the manager's office involved. Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. It has, I mean, when the building was first purchased, it was primarily with an EDA grant.
Yeah.
And Senator Burr, Congressman at the time, was working closely with the county here and Chamber of Commerce in the, in the county to put that building back into productive use. It was a, of, of cut and sew operation for 50 years or whatever it was and it was sitting there vacant. And it, it had very minimal opportunities for a useful life. And I think it's something we can really be proud of. But the primary funding initially came from EDA.
And then its, its initial purpose was going to be kind of a data center?
Telecenter, yeah, a telecenter. At that time, back in those days, it was called the Rural Internet Access Authority.
And then, and then as, as we were challenged or not successful in really landing, putting anything together.
That's correct.
And so then we took the space and tried to, I think, make the most of it. And, and as, as Dale commented, I mean, I think it's at a place to where, and I've attended some of the board meetings of late, they're like, you know, what's, what is our best purpose? And where I'm getting to is, is I think with this new development with the Chamber for Economic Development, once it formalizes, I really think that that it could become a, another tool, a potential tool to partner with.
We certainly will be working closely with the BDC and with Dale. That, that's our, I would say, in addition to the Allegheny County and Town of Sparta, the Business Development Center will be a, a close working relationship partner with the Allegheny County of Economic Development.
And I don't think there's any way we could come close to trying to manage a space like that for $10,000 if we did it in-house with, from the county. It's my, one last comment, on our driver's license office, I don't think they're going to ever come back if this board doesn't put some pressure to them or reach out to them and, you know, ask them where they are. It's my understanding, they have been shorthanded, COVID has made it even worse, and they just haven't had the staff to staff up here. And we haven't put any pressure on to ask. And I think if, if it would help, probably if we, I don't even know who to ask, but I'm sure there's an agency we could reach out to. And maybe you've got some resources that we could send, you know, from the manager's office, but it's up to whatever the board wants to do. But that would be a suggestion I have as far as the, getting anybody back in that office.
I guess it'd be a phone call from one of you to Senator Ballard would go a long ways towards getting that rolling. Thank you, Dale. That's all I've got.
I think Dale's comment about the, a lot of people do stuff online with the DMV. But there's a lot of people that don't have, that are not trained in the computer world that can. that can't use the computers to do their stuff online. Some of it gets to be complicated, from what I understand, so, you know, it's available, but it's not available to everyone.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
And I, I'd like, I'd just like, the, the thing I'll leave you with, I'd like to assure you that I love Allegheny County, I love the people here in Allegheny County, I could be doing a whole lot of other stuff, but I enjoy what I do up at the BDC. I, I get up every day thinking, how can I help folks here be successful? And so that's, that's what I'm trying to do, that's what the BDC is doing, it's what Brian, what the chamber's doing. Like I said, a little bit of vision from y'all will go a long ways towards helping us with that.
I think we'd get that lined up for next workshop or two, and then have a discussion about where we want a vision from this board for them, where we need to go. I think it'd be a good workshop situation to talk about that. Dale, certainly appreciate you guys coming.
Information, good presentations.
Yeah, it was, appreciate, appreciate the job you guys are doing.
I would propose that we formulate a letter to the DMV, all of us sign it, send it to the Ballard and try to put some pressure.
Yeah, see if we can get it back. Yeah, we're good. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's do it, everybody. Anybody have anything else? We'll get a little break here for about 40 minutes. Nothing else, your motion to adjourn.
Same here.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Take a break.